How are we, uh, who's Julie Bree?
Oh, from the...
She's the dump.
Dump, okay. Yeah, okay. She's the dump.
She's the dump. She, she works for the dump.
She are in our...
Yeah. So, this is fun.
Okay, so, um...
So, your mics operate, you don't, you don't have to do anything. You just, uh, your mics will automatically, uh, you can notice they'll, they'll turn on as when, when you start speaking and they'll turn off when you stop. You have a hard, those are hardwired mics, so those work just like the old ones did. So, uh, that's it. We're gonna have the zoom up on that monitor there. These monitors be kinda separate, but treated separately, but... So, most of the difference is gonna be, it's up going in the background for Thursday. I'm, one second, I'll get it right.
Does it feel a little echoey that way, but not coming in this way as much?
It's echoey here.
It's definitely echoey, and there's a background noise.
Totally. Can you hear okay out there, though?
Yeah, yeah.
White voices in the truck or something?
I don't, I can't tell.
We've gotta do an adjustment on the sound on YouTube, so just take a couple, couple more minutes.
What's this other button down here?
What's that?
What's this other button down here?
Don't touch it.
I don't even hear it. Should've told me that earlier.
What is it?
So, um, so, you, you can press the button to, um, activate the... There, there's several settings for that, so if you wanna do a manual setting, you'd have to press the button to speak to, for it to turn on. That's all it's for.
So, I don't need...
But you can, you can make it do other things, so...
Okay.
But eventually, there, there will be a voting system incorporated with the mics. There is, we just haven't, uh, got it set up yet, so...
Okay.
So, tonight, we'll do it the old fashioned.
Well, so, and the three dots button is probably settings or something?
What's that?
The three dots button is probably settings?
There, yeah, you don't have to touch the mics at all, yeah. It, it turns off automatically, yeah.
Just gonna have to put her hands on her lap.
Just curious, I like to play with stuff.
Be back.
Is it still off the door?
Bedroom without a door.
Yeah, instead asking for a chair, you should ask for a door.
And whenever anybody stays at my house, I go, "Yeah, I have an extra bed, but there's no door."
Most people are down to...
No, they don't.
Testing one, two, testing, can you hear me, Pat?
Uh, requirement is that we all are aware of it, and that everyone is on the same...
Testing, testing one, two.
We can hear you in Zoom land.
Thanks, Pat.
Zoom away.
Oh, but you still sound funny. It's wonderful. Doesn't he always sound really tinny? Woman in the can?
It sounded better tonight, though.
You're in the hot seat, Orin.
Sounds like rain on YouTube.
So...
Rain.
It almost sounds like living mic video. As if you, Michael kinda started to walk past and look forward and pick him up at the same time, when you were laughing earlier.
Well, what's that buzzing sound?
What is that horrible noise?
Oh, okay. That's all right, let me know when we're ready to rumble.
I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, June 18th. If you please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice... And if we could please have a few moments of silence for Raquel Alcala Jimenez, who recently passed. Roll the call, please.
Councilmember Ponce.
Here.
Councilmember Schickling.
Here.
Pro-Town Lovell.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
For the record, uh, City Attorney Scott Campbell is in attendance, and Councilmember De La Rosa will not be in attendance for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Are there any announcements or written communications?
The city clerk's office received one written communication regarding item 10, uh, planning commission appointments. Um, that email has been provided to the city council and is on, um, the, in the city clerk's file.
Right. Department head reports?
Good af, good afternoon, Mayor, city council members and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. The Public Works team is working hard on fixing much-needed repairs around town, like the restrooms and beaches and streets. Uh, much of the repair and restoration work throughout the years was deferred due to, um, lack of funding, and now we're seeing those effects, as you all know. Um, so I'm working on a pre- preventative maintenance plan that includes routine inspections to help us stay on track with the regular maintenance. Meanwhile, the crew is still out there working hard on these critical repairs to our infrastructure, like the leak, um, under the Green Pier, uh, posts on Set Beach, the manhole covers on Clarissa, the women's mole restroom, trip and fall in front of Latitude, which has been repaired, and Marlin Club, lighting around town. Uh, so I just wanted to, um, mention all of that to be, please be patient with us while all this work is, um, continuing throughout the summer. Um, Public Works is also working with community services on the acquisition and installation of the storage containers at Tremont Hall. Those containers should be arriving finally this week, um, which should be really tricky to get them around that really tight turn, but we can do it. Uh, they also installed lighting and cameras at the CKV parking lot to monitor, um, the jam and for transit vehicles. Uh, finally, we hired a full-time maintenance worker, too, that he will start June 27th. We're in the process of hiring a full-time mechanic and interviewing some part-time, part-time maintenance workers next week. Uh, we all know we need the help. Um, and then finally, Public Works crew is preparing for the Fourth of July festivities and working with community services to ensure Front Street is ready for the big roaring twenties.
Yeah, very good.
And that's all I have.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Orin Carstark and Harbor Master. Since my last report, June 4th, uh, patrol moored 619 votes for a total of 2,236 nights. Patrol warned and advised 26 individuals of municipal code violations, responded to two, uh, issues within the marine protected areas, and issued seven citations in total. Harbor responded to four medical calls, assisted the sheriffs one time, assisted Baywatch four times, and assisted the public 67 times. Patrol also completed 188 security checks of the facilities and surrounding waters during this period. Um, we're all staffed up for the summer, and we've got our part-time staff hired, and, uh, we're finishing up the training with them, as well as the, uh, harbor sanitation and maintenance crew. So, we're pretty much ready for summer. Thank you.
I just have a really quick question. Paul Sanchez is the one that's pretty much out on the mall, correct?
He is right now, he's in charge of, uh, basically the mall training. Um, we're getting all our officers trained with the responsibilities of the mall and what happens out there, so that on the days that he's not available, we can put other people in there.
Okay. Do, do we ju, do, do we check the fishermen for what's in their catch, if they're catching legal fish?
Um...
I know William used to do that.
We, yeah, we, we do, if, usually we get a complaint, and then we go over and we double-check their, their catch. Um, most of the fishermen are regulars out there, so we kinda know them. But every once in a while, we'll get, somebody will report to us that there's short-spin cap or something like that, and then we have to go over there and verify that. Yeah. Thank you.
Hope I'm not having fun with this. Who's next?
Uh, good evening, Mayor, city council, city staff. Since our last meeting, um, Sheriff's Department made nine arrests. There were six for drunk and public, uh, one for DUI, uh, one for child endangerment, and, uh, one was for, uh, warrants that he already had in his, uh, record. Um, we had 207 calls for service during that time, um, we did 26 traffic stops, uh, three pedestrian stops, and, um, we are planning for the Fourth of July now, we have a full staff, everyone that's, uh, at the station, we're working that day, um, and also we have an initial six deputies coming over to work as well, just to make sure we have that. Really pushing out the, uh, the ordinance, new ordinance on, um, you know, not throwing projectiles, water balloons, so that's gonna be something we're gonna enforce quite, you know, aggressively. Um, and listening, please, uh, understand that that's something that's gonna be a heavy fine, and, and please understand that, uh, there's gonna be no, uh, getaway there. If you're found with water balloons going on, you're gonna get cited, right, so... Um, our next, uh, coffee with the captain, or however you wanna call it, the community meeting's gonna be on July 10th, uh, it's gonna be a morning meeting. Probably be at about, uh, 9:00 AM. No location yet, and that's tentative, we gotta make sure we have someone that can put us, uh, give us, like, some time and a place to meet.
July 10th in the morning, and everything else is TBD?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
July 10th in the morning, and everything else is TBD?
Yes, yes, the Wednesday after the Fourth.
Okay. Thanks. Questions? No, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. David Hart, Community Services. Summer's here, and we at the Community Service Department interpret that to mean fun in the sun. We are back with our free summer lineup. Monday's beach day on South Beach from 11:00 to 3:00 o'clock, come join us for an afternoon of fun and games, kayak tours, or lounge in one of our dingbags. Tuesdays and Thursdays, which includes tonight, um, beach bingo on South Beach from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Wednesdays, fishing derby on the Green Pier from 7:00 to 9:00. Also on Wednesday is movies on the beach on South Beach from 8:00 to 10:30 PM. Friday, we have, uh, Fit Friday on Wrigley Stage from 9:30 AM to 11:30 AM. That's a dance fitness first hour and a beach body fitness, um, in the second hour, starting at 10:30. And then Friday nights, we have what's called Funky Friday Nights on Wrigley Stage from 7:00 to 9:00. Set your kids free to the beat, or, um, come if you're, if you're a kid at heart, and come dance. Saturday, we have Art in the Park in Avalon, at Avalon Kids Park from 11:00 to 3:00 PM. Learn to create specific crafts weekly, as well as letting your inner artist come out. Sundays, Wellness Day on South Beach, let your mind go and set yourself free for the next week with yoga on the beach. Um, what, one thing we would love to do is, we wanna thank our major sponsors for helping making this summer fun possible. Avalon Smart Homes, Lions Club, Yacht Club, and Joe's Rent a Boat, and also wanna thank all the businesses that donate prizes for our activities. For our seniors 55 and over, we have some free offerings as well to keep you tuned up and healthy for the summer. Monday and Wednesdays, we have Simply Stretch with Carla Parsons at Tremont Hall from 9:00 to 10:00 AM. And Tuesdays and Thursdays, Carla will be teaching aqua aerobics up at the Canyon Inn from 8:30 to 9:30. Date camp has started, and both of those are free. Date camp has started and going strong. Camp runs every weekday from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and we have a high-energy and creative staff that has our youth, six-to-12-year-old, engaged in learning and having fun. Sofia Navarro, who is our camp leader, has done an outstanding job creating the themed weeks, activities, and excursions for this year's camp. If you'd like to sign your child to a summer of, of a venture, sign up now at thecityofavalon.com on the community service page. It is just $20 a day, or $80 for the week if you sign up for the full week. Fourth of July is right around the corner, and we have some announcements for you. The USC Marching Band is coming back, and will be holding a concert on the third on Wrigley Stage from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. On the fourth, judging for the golf carts will be held from 10:00 to 11:30 on Lower Descanso. We decided to go back to holding, uh, the judging earlier to help with the lineups, um, later. The house judging will also be happening from 10:00 to 11:00 AM. Parade starts at 1:00 PM, the grand marshal will be the Commodore of the Yacht Club, Mr. John Wells. The lock, the yacht club is celebrating 100 years, um, on that day. After the parade, the Rumble Kings will be performing on Wrigley Stage from 4:00 to 8:30 PM, giving us the sounds of the twenties and thirties swing music. Fireworks at 9:00. And, uh, also, we'd like to remind everyone that water balloons and squirt guns will be prohibited this year during the parade. Um, we wanna make sure that everyone's having a fun and safe Fourth of July. Is there any questions from you?
Have we put anything in the newspaper with your lineup of all the things you just said about the parade? Are we gonna put something in the newspaper?
I, I will put, I will put it in.
It's, it's just that still, there's a lot of people, a lot of visitors that pick up the paper, and it'd be nice if they could see it, you know? Cause it's, it's a big, it's a big deal.
Okay.
It's a really big deal.
I'll make sure we get that in this week.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I don't know if my ears are plugged up or what, but this is difficult for me to hear.
Me too, I'm having a, a terrible time. This feels like a hearing test, because I have, you know, they, they do that... Can you hear stuff? And, yeah.
And it's not even that, that, it's...
It's echoing.
It's echoing, and...
Yeah, it really is hard to understand. What's that? Yeah, okay, you're, the same for the audience, okay?
So, this is obviously the first meeting we have with the new system, but it does, does need a little bit of fine tuning.
Yes. Bear with us.
Matt Baker, Finance Director, uh, just to echo, uh, Dave's sentiments, bear with us, we are, uh, working through these technical issues, and, uh, we'll get them resolved at future meetings. Um, we, working with the vendor, we knew this was a tight turnaround to be able to do everything in between two meetings. Uh, we had the team out the Wednesday after the last meeting, and they've been working even on weekends to try to get this, uh, ready for this meeting. It's just hard for, for us, cause there's not a lot of time where we'll have more than two weeks in between a meeting, uh, but we'll, we'll get this resolved. Um, less exciting on a, a revenue standpoint, uh, April visitor-driven revenues were, uh, down across the board around 10%, uh, with the exception of cruise ships. Uh, I don't think that's too much of a surprise, given the April weather we had. Um, May with the early reporters are kinda looking very similar, uh, but if there's reason to be optimistic on May numbers, uh, nightly mornings in the harbor were up close to 10%. Uh, so, not enough people have really reported in May to, to get a good read on how May will finish up. But even if, uh, May and June end up down closer to what April turned out, so that'd be around 10%, uh, that would bring TOT for the year, uh, to about 7.6 million, 7.65, uh, against 7 million that we had budgeted, so still well above budgeted. Um, in the, the budget document, we had it estimated at 7.78 was what we had as kind of the low-end estimate, so there's a chance we miss that low end. Uh, but what it means from a, a starting fund balance standpoint, the, the positive news is, um, our interest income's gonna be considerably higher, um, than what I had put in there, just as kind of my... Uh, I was hoping to say, hey, exciting, we have a couple hundred thousand more than we thought, but the, the interest income estimate should cover the difference if TOT falls short. So, really, from a budget standpoint, a, a starting fund balance or reserve standpoint, we'll probably finish close to where we said we're gonna start in, in the budget document. Um, other than that, I do have a couple presentations tonight, um, so unless there's questions, leave it there. All right, thank you.
Oh, that's lovely.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, mayor and city council. Um, I've got, uh, two... Currently, the city IT manager position, which is newly created and approved by city council, the recruitment is now open. Um, we've posted it on, uh, LinkedIn, Government Technology, and a variety of other professional organizations online. I've already received a handful of interest from folks who are interested in the position, so that's super exciting. Um, resumes, a cover letter, and five references are due by July 26th. Um, send it to HR@cityofavalon.com, um, or if you, if anybody out there has any questions related to the position, feel free to contact me. Jay Francis@cityofavalon.com, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about the position. Uh, second update, uh, the compensation study RFP closed today at 2:00 PM, uh, and we received 18 proposals. So, um, that's excellent, um, we'll get a fantastic, uh, vendor to help out with that, that process for the city, so... And, uh, I've got a, um, uh, item on the agenda later tonight that I'm excited to share with you guys, and that's all I have.
Okay, any good questions? No, thank you.
Good evening, mayor. Good on you.
Your honor.
Good evening, mayor and council, Claudia Rebaugh, the Mayor's Department. Um, we, I don't have too many things to update you with this evening. I did want to make you aware that, uh, in the next month or two, the Planning Commission will be, uh, considering, uh, ordinance to add wireless communication facilities regulations to the city municipal code. The city in 2019 did adopt, uh, regulations related to wireless facilities in a public right-of-way, um, but there are currently no regulations on the books in municipal code for wireless on private property. So, back in April, BDK did provide kind of an initial presentation to Planning Commission to sort of let them know what the regulations are in place from the FCC and state law, and the types of topics that we would be discussing as part of that ordinance. Um, what we're primarily doing is setting up an application process for things that can be discretionarily reviewed by Planning Commission, what things have to be reviewed administratively by staff, either, um, mostly with the, uh, director, Planning Director level, uh, and then setting up, um, development standards for like location of facilities, design, um, that sort of, you know, uh, separation from certain types of uses, that sort of thing. So, we're hoping to schedule that for the first review with Planning Commission in the next couple of months, and of course, ultimately, it will be scheduled for city council for your final review and consideration. Um, that's all I have for this evening, you guys will be talking about Planning Commission appointments later in the meeting.
Yes.
Any questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Okay, City Manager report?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Chief. Elieira is on vacation this week, so that's why he is not here to give his presentation. Let me be the third person to warn everybody about projectile ordinance that will be in place. So now, everybody's been duly warned three times. So when they say, "How come they weren't giving out warnings?", tonight's the night. This is your warning. And we're taking this seriously, simply because as everybody knows, it's not a comfortable situation to be kind of just sitting duck in that parade as you're getting bombarded by water balloons. And particularly in the harbor, you know, we know that's really become a problem when they're in the water. We had to fish them out for days after Fourth of July last year. So Harbor Patrol will be out there monitoring that as well. Just a quick update on where we are at with the short-term rentals. I think Council knows we've, staff has had to go back approximately 30 years of Planning Commission meetings and go through each meeting to document the short-term rentals, the properties that were actually granted over the years. Sometimes the addresses were clear when they were doing it, sometimes those addresses changed, sometimes how they referenced it. It's been very difficult to pin that down, time-consuming, but we're getting there. We're very close, we feel, by the end of, hopefully by the end of June, we'll have a complete list of everybody that's on board, be able to get that posted, and then start presenting discussion for Planning Commission in July, and then hopefully bring that to Council. So we'll keep you updated on where we're at there, but we feel like we're really getting over this big hurdle, which is getting that list. I just want to briefly mention an update on Crescent Hillside. I know Bob's here, but I just wanted to say that the contractor is on schedule. They've been doing a great job out there. Bob Greenlaw's been taking them whenever there's a break, taking them around, seeing other hillsides, other projects, potential projects on the island, so we could partner with these guys going forward. But we feel we're on schedule, the most difficult or the hardest borings and the most difficult part of the project, they're just about complete with, that's the upper part where they're dangling to do that work, and then the rest will be slightly below that. So we're very happy with how that project's been going so far. And then finally, just last week, we had our second visit from the Forense. This one had more people on it and more people that got off ship on island. And I just want to say, I think we had no more delays than we did the first time. They were, everybody moved quickly through the line. There was one problem where the captain did not have the three bays open on the ship, but after a couple calls, they were able to do that in the afternoon. Getting off the island went without a hitch, and everybody was able to get on and off. The boat was out there for a number of hours after their scheduled departure, but that was a medical situation and wasn't related to anything getting people on or off the island. So so far, so good. We have, the next voyage is on the 24th of June. And I think coming out of that, we'll probably have some debriefs with Carnival staff to see where we're at and what we can do better. This last time, I do want to mention, they sent, I think, five of the Carnival staff members to the island in the afternoon to assist us and assist all the volunteers to get people off in the lines and off onto the tenders. So that was a big help. We appreciate that. Any questions?
No, but I guess now we don't get to hear much from Bob Greenlaw, other than when he has an item on the agenda.
And that's an issue why?
Well, like, so you will report, okay, did we go out to bid on the underground utilities? And if so, what's the status of that? We just miss you, Bob.
Okay, so, question.
Five corners?
Five corners. We're probably within a day or two of being published with it. I'm satisfied with the package.
Sure, that it's an excellent bid package, that at the end result, we won't get a whole lot of claims. So I need to be very fine-toothed, you know, details about how that reads. So how we pay for things, how we measure things, all of those things. And there's lots of items, that some of it is utilities, some of it's roadway, so. That's things we do as engineers.
No, and that's what I was wondering, because we just hadn't heard much, and I mean...
Coming your way soon.
Okay, thank you. So you would be reporting that when that happens?
Yes.
Okay, nobody's going to steal your thunder.
And really, depending on the direction Dave gives me, you know, I can report out on all these things. I've just been, at this point, you know, kind of standing back a little bit and letting Jackie do the report with public work. So but as far as capital projects, yeah, I can come up and do that.
Bob's always here when we're ready to report something out, with direction, we'll make sure he's making it.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. City Attorney?
Nothing specific to report. I will monitor, though, the sound and picture for Zoom the rest of the evening.
Okay. Okay, Council members?
I guess I'll go first. I hear that Pride went really well. I missed it because I went over town on Saturday for a LA Department of Cannabis Control seminar that they held for understanding the rules and regulations of cannabis, because it just got reclassified from a three to a one, which means it's not a really bad drug, so it'll be more accessible. And so I was looking to see if that made any impact in the international waters and getting a dispensary here. Because as you know, the main reason I am looking to get a dispensary on the island is to get another revenue stream going in here. So we won't be so dependent on TOT and warfage, although I know those are not going to go away, and we don't want them to go away, they're in our best interest. But just another revenue stream is always a good idea. So I went over for that, and it was very interesting, and I made some new contacts. So I'll continue to follow up on that. And then when I got back, because I was able to catch the 2 o'clock boat, and everything just looked like it was going great guns, and so I hope everybody had a great time at Pride. Also, I attended the Tuna Club opening day ceremony when I got back that night, and that was really, really cool. Bart took us on a tour of the Tuna Club and explained a lot of things. And I've always known that it was a really impressive, really sport fishing club. It's not like a regular old yacht club. It's a real sport fishing club, and they fish on linen lines still. And so that was very, very cool, and I'm glad they invited us. It was a really fun evening. And lastly, I'd just like to give a shout out to Jackie Cordero, because, you know, I'm one of those people, it's like I'm walking around town, and I'll just shoot her an email, and I'll shoot her a text or something with pictures, like, eh, eh, eh. And she doesn't get bothered at all, she's right on it. And like she mentioned tonight, a trip and fall that I pointed out when I was at the Taste of Avalon is now fixed and all this kind of stuff. So she and her crew are on it and totally appreciate it, thank you so much. And then another shout out to Orin, because a friend of mine and I were just on the pier, and we were just walking, and, you know, he was going to work, but he had some time. And we just started shooting it, and then he started filling me in on all of this stuff. Like, I talked to you a little bit about the South Beach situation with the Three Fingers and all that kind of stuff. I did not know the history, and Orin told me everything about it, and I was just looking at that wall, just going, oh my God, the sand used to go all the way up there? I had no idea. So that was very informative, and also to know that the permitting process is underway and, you know, looking for the funding and all that kind of stuff to mitigate that whole situation is in the works. I was just like, yay, yay. I mean, because Dave told me when I talked to him about it, but it's like, it doesn't sink in, for me, anyway. I'm a visual person, so until I saw that, I was just like, oh my God. So yay. So kudos to the city and the Harbor Department and everybody for getting all that together, and looking forward to the progress that's going to be made there and getting that back to where it's stable beach park. And I think that's pretty much it for me.
Love Catalina, Jim Luciano. And I would like to thank everyone who did attend Pride. It was a great event, year three, looking forward to year four. And we did get quite a few people from the mainland who came over to enjoy it. So it was a good event, and I look forward to more. And it seems to be growing, so we actually had more booths this year, so it was very nice. And then my other thing is that I will be attending Cal City's policy meeting on Friday. My environmental quality committee will be meeting, which hopefully will be the last one this year. And that's all I've got.
I attended the Gateway Cities COG meeting at the start of the month, and then came back and did Planning Commission interviews with Mayor Marshall. So I spent the whole day up here at City Hall. Thank you, Kelly, very much from Sagecrest for sitting in on those meetings with us and ensuring that we were providing fair and even interviews for everybody. I'll be attending Gateway Cities COG at the end of this month as well. This second meeting in June is in lieu of a meeting in July, which I greatly appreciate every year, since it's such a crazy first week of the month for us. And then I will not be attending the Long Beach Unified School Board meeting tomorrow, but I do encourage everyone to watch. They'll be discussing the budget. Their budget this year is a $44 million shortfall for Long Beach Unified. And so trying to see how that impacts us and what that ends up meaning is, I think, important. They are still working on ways that they can allow residents of Avalon to provide public comment live during the meeting. So hopefully, before the school year gets started, we'll have an answer for that. Okay. Oh, and Pride, Gay Pride, that was really fun, by the way. Sorry, yeah, kudos to Jim and his staff. The booths looked great, everyone was having a great day. We ended up going back down in the evening and dancing to the, oh my goodness, their last name had the word Vixen's in it, Pulp Vixen. They were fantastic in pink, so we had a lot of fun.
Good, yeah. Tuna Club was great, Pride was great. Working with the Forense group is a lot of fun, and my husband was there all day, which was really amazing. I think he's going to come back and do it again. And I'm getting a lot of good comments on the elbow still. So Bob, I think that's going really well. Okay, so oral communications. This is an opportunity for people in the audience to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken.
Hello, Mayor. Thanks for the tip on the pathway. I saw it right away.
Much better, huh?
I found it right away, and it was easy. Good afternoon, I'm Hector de la Torre. I'm the Executive Director of the Gateway Cities Council of Governments. You're a member, longtime member. And I just have been going around to all of the City Council meetings, introducing myself, letting you know that we are here to serve you. So for those of you that don't know about the Gateway Cities, it's a joint powers authority of 27 cities and 11 unincorporated areas. Over 2 million residents altogether. If it was one city, it would be the fifth-largest city in America. If it was one state, it would be the 38th-largest state in America. And yet, we're just a little piece of LA County. So we're out there trying to bring resources to our communities. We focus on transportation, environment, housing and homelessness, economic development, and then we're about to do, or we're trying to do, health and wellness. And bring resources, make them available to our cities. Whoever wants to take us up on it can do it, they don't, they don't. We have been, thanks to Councilwoman Lavelle, been very focused, and Dave, we've been focused very much on two things that are specific to Avalon. One is the hospital, and two is fiber optic cable. So I've talked to your consultants, obviously talked to staff, and we are trying to do everything we can, engaging our legislators as well, to help with these efforts. And so I've told Councilwoman Lavelle, I'm not stopping until we do both.
Wonderful.
So I'm committed to you. And other things, in my meeting today with Dave, there were a couple of other things outside of those two that I think we can help with as well. And again, if there's anything we can do for you, please let us know. I really take seriously our obligation to you.
Well, thank you. And I think we're very lucky to have Lisa attending those meetings and being as involved as she is, and thank you. So, I mean, you put us on the map, where a lot of people don't have us on the map. So thank you so much. I don't know if anybody else wants to comment.
Of course, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to also just highlight Hector's been instrumental in connecting us with resources, instrumental in making sure that even though a number of the programs that the COG undertakes don't necessarily originally plan to include us, that there is inclusion for Avalon. And I think, I don't know, Hector, if you could speak a little bit to your background as well. You bring both elected official and an advocate role into this, which I think is super valuable, so.
Yeah, I'm a former state legislator. I represented about a third of the COG. So I was on the COG board as a city councilman in Southgate for seven years. So I know these communities, I care for them, and I tell people, it's like being in the legislature without Sacramento. Because I'm advocating for my cities the way I would as a representative. And I know the folks, so I can talk to Josh, or Lena, or hopefully next senator. I was telling Dave, we got to get Adam Schiff over here. I actually mentioned it to him, and he said, "I've never represented an island before", and I told him, "You're about to."
Yeah.
Jump on that.
Wonderful.
And then I think also, just your work with LA Care has been huge recently for the hospital especially. So can't thank you enough for the assistance with that and jumping at the possibility of helping them through that.
Yeah, I'm on the board of LA Care and have been for seven, eight years. So when we found out about what's going on here, we stepped in.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, any questions or comments? Enjoy the rest of me, if you like.
One last thing, we are coming back. The Gateway COG is coming back for our annual retreat. We will be here September 6th, I think, is the first Wednesday. You're all welcome to come, well, brown act, but we usually have a dinner, or we do have a dinner the Wednesday night of our visit here. You're all welcome to come by within the proper regulations.
Thank you.
And there's drinks afterwards. Coincidentally, you have a Sapphire Bar. I think that would be okay, that's a public place.
Change tapas.
Thank you so much, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hector.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Paul Burchell, Avalon Library. Just a reminder, the library will be closed tomorrow for the Juneteenth holiday, but we are mighty open the rest of the week. Somebody on Facebook mentioned the library's virtual programs, and I suddenly realized I'm pretty bad at promoting those. LA County offers these terrific programs online at lacountylibrary.org, and then you click and click and go to our Zoom page. They're countywide. It's a good opportunity to see some things that are paid for with a big county budget. For example, today, and I just got here too late for this one, Work Ready: Mastering the Interview Process. They have a webinar on job applying. Next, on the 25th at 11:00, Work Ready: Understanding Benefits Beyond Salary. So these are just HR helpful things. Particularly, I think our young people could use some, you know, bones and mortar understanding of job application processes and things like that. Wednesday, June 26th, there's a seminar on home improvement scams from the DPFI, the Department of Public, I don't know what FI is, probably housing, you might know, I don't know. So the virtual programs are really good. I'm going to make it a point to talk about them when I come here monthly. Also want to promote our Summer Discovery Program. Now that school is out, come on down, read a book, get some prizes. I'm going to do an ice cream party, let's see, I think it's going to be July 18th, and then I'm going to do another one in August. Just little tubs of ice cream, come in, tell me your book, you know, get a card, do an ice cream. Also, the county, the Library Foundation, which is a big, sort of Friends of the Library-like board that handles all libraries, is donating for four packs of tickets to Raging Waters that we're going to pick in a raffle. So the odds are good, at the moment, the odds are really good. Pretty much, come on in, you'll get a four-pack at the moment. You don't wait a little while.
Wait, when's the drawing?
What's that?
When's the drawing?
Probably in August.
Oh, okay.
Summer Discovery goes through August.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, yeah, we got that. And also, we're going to be participating in the In-N-Out Burger. Also, we're going to be participating in the In-N-Out Burger Program where you read some books. I give you a coupon good for a burger at In-N-Out. Why do I have to bribe people with hamburgers?
I know.
Also Tuesday to Friday, we're going to continue our Creation Station. We do a craft Tuesdays and Fridays at 4 o'clock. Coming up in July, July 11th, we're going to have an appearance by the magician Billy Bonkers as part of the, he's a signo. He's English, but it's going to be a July 4th celebration. It's going to be kind of awesome. That's going to be really fun. Also part of the Summer Discovery Program, get people in, get some books. I'm going to continue to promote our book clubs. It's going to be Fade Out, I think is the title for this month. That's next week. You still have time to read it, it's only 300 pages. Next month, we're going to be participating in the LA Countywide One County One Book Program. We're all reading a book called LA Weather. And there's going to be some countywide events, like a webinar with the author talking. There's going to be a How to Write program with the author. There's going to be a big thing at Grant Park, which we are not invited to because they won't pay for the boat ticket, but that's their business. So we're going to be doing a bit of that. We'll have a party here for that. I haven't read the book yet. I heard it's really interesting. I'm going to be looking at that, you know, in the next couple of weeks. That's about all I got for you right now. Come to Color Mania on Cruise Days, that's Tuesdays, Chuck Liddell's History Talk, second and fourth Wednesday of the month. And we're going to start in July, our ESL Conversation Circle for folks who want to better their English. We're not going to be teaching English, but we're going to create a sort of unthreatening and welcoming, just conversation circle. Alex is going to do it. And so we're going to be doing that on the second and fourth Wednesday of the month as well, at 6 o'clock. So thank you very much.
Busy, busy, busy.
Come to your library, we're there.
Yeah, there's a lot going on. Anybody else, or do you have anybody called in?
No.
Okay. Presentations, none. Okay, consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one, approval total expenditures for May 7th, May 27th, 2024 through June 7th, 2024, totaling $1,323,487.12. Adopt a resolution approving the annual GAN appropriations limit calculation for fiscal year 2024, 2025. 2020, item three, 2024 Conflict of Interest Code Biennial Notice. Item four, adopt a resolution adopting a project for fiscal year 2425 funded by SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. And then finally, item five, adopt a resolution approving a new job classification and job description for the position of city clerk.
Okay, does anybody want to pull anything, ask any questions, or do somebody want to make a motion?
I don't know if I want to pull anything, but I'm just kind of confused by number three because it's biennial, so I think this happened before I was on council. So it says, "require all departments and advisory bodies that have previously adopted conflict of interest codes to review such conflict of interest codes and report to city council any amendments or report that no amendments are necessary no later than October 1st of this year." So this is just telling us that staff is looking at this and then they're going to come talk to us in October?
Yes, so right now Stephanie and I will be getting together and we'll look at the job descriptions that are currently under the Conflict of Interest Code. We'll take note of any job descriptions that have been added, omitted, or amended in any way. And then we'll go ahead and revise those job descriptions and bring them to you for review by October 1. So the last time we did this was two years ago, but yes.
Okay, so that's just city employees, or does that take into account city council and Planning Commission and anything else?
Contractors, yes.
Everybody?
Planning Commission, city council, correct, department heads.
Okay, so this is just forewarning that this is happening and then we'll talk about this in October. Okay.
And I have to do this by July 1, so.
Got it, okay, all right. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Then I'll make a motion to approve items one through five.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Shiglin?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lavel?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Councilmember De La Rosa.
Item number six, we have a public hearing. So we have a public hearing, submittal of property-related fees to Los Angeles County for fiscal year 2425 property tax roll, sewer, saltwater, and solid waste fees.
Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any comments? When the public hearing, or nothing came in with you, for you? Okay, I will close the public hearing.
I think Matt has a.
Oh, running into a technical difficulty. I did have the rates published, but I'll do my best to summarize. Sewer rates, as outlined in the Cost to Service Study, are going up by 2.5%. Saltwater by 3.5% and solid waste by 7.5%.
Yeah, I think you got that backwards because here it says sewer 3.5%, saltwater 2.5%.
You're correct, I got it backwards. So sewer is 3.5%, saltwater is 2.5%. And then I had a schedule breaking it down by category, but we're having some technical issues pulling that up. But if there are any questions on specific categories or amounts, again, how the numbers we came up with was all driven by the Cost to Service Study that was adopted by council in '21. This is year four of the five-year study, so at some point next year, we'll start the process again for another Cost to Service Study looking at sewer, saltwater, solid waste. The sewer and saltwater went exactly as outlined in the study, but last year, if you recall, or actually two years ago, we've kind of more gradually phased in the solid waste rates. So ultimately, our rates will align with the rates in the study, but rather than have a 20% increase in one of the years, we've phased that increase in over several years.
A couple hundred pages of documentation was fun to read through and just throw all the notes on it, so I don't know that I have any questions. I'd make a motion, since seeing no majority protest, to direct the city clerk to request LA County to place the fees on the fiscal year 2024, 2025 property tax roll.
There a second?
I'll second that.
And then adopt, sorry, there's adopting four resolutions, right? Do we need to do those, can I do those all together as this is? Or, okay. Yeah, so moved.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Shiglin?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lavel?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Councilmember De La Rosa.
Matthew Baker, item number seven.
Item number seven, we have the proposed fiscal year 2324, should be 2425 budget.
So we're running into some technical issues, so I'm not going to be able to pull up the presentation, but a good thing is I have it all by memory, so I'll just.
Of course you do.
So this is our fifth budget workshop. After we went through the entire budget in detail at the last meeting, I said tonight I would only go through any changes we made in the two-week period, plus any, answer any questions council had on the budget. The changes are outlined in the staff report, but in general, the major changes were was we got an updated estimate on the sheriff's contract, which increased from where I had budgeted by about $20,000. The other is there are some minor labor changes that affected all the funds differently, but it was more or less a wash. There's actually a couple thousand less in labor costs if you combine them across all the funds. And that was more just correcting for, actually a calculation error is what led to the decrease. And then the only other changes were on the capital outlay side. We increased the budgeted amount for the workforce housing project after a further discussion with the engineering team on that. And that amount there is really just to kind of get it to the next phase, so that's not really construction, it's just kind of finishing everything needed to move it to that next step. And that increased in the budget from, I believe, 50 to 100, or I believe it was from 50 to 150, but it may have been from 100 to 150. And then the last, and it's a positive one, is I left out the Club Doc Dini Doc grant revenue. So we were successful in obtaining a grant for replacing the Club Doc Dini Doc. That project was in there, budgeted for $500,000, but I had left out the $300,000 in grant revenue coming in. So those are the changes that we made since the last meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions, but more or less it's what's as presented or was presented at the last meeting.
Okay. That was awesome.
Note that, two minutes.
She hasn't had the machine on today. Anyway, okay, if you have questions, fine. If not, if there's a consensus, we call for the motion. Someone want to make a motion to adopt a resolution?
I'll adopt a resolution establishing the city budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Shiglin?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Lavel?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Councilmember De La Rosa.
So whatever they did in the back room, it is much better, thank you.
And here I thought we were going to have hours of Matt's presentation. Thank you.
And the next item, number eight, good news, next couple pieces are pretty good news. We have approval of a $20 increase in commuter book subsidy for a total subsidy of $105 per book effective beginning July 1st, 2024. Matt?
So I just want to acknowledge the hard work that Devin and the team put into our transit program. So what essentially we're able to do is some of the cost savings from our new transit system, we were able to, in discussions with Metro, reallocate to our commuter subsidy pooled funding. Again, the monies we get to subsidize our commuter books come from Propay Incentive Funds, which is a countywide sales tax measure that has to be directed towards transit operations. And so we're able to, every year, apply for these discretionary funds and apply them either toward the land transit and cross-channel subsidy program. I'm kind of simplifying a bit, but that's kind of the general gist of how it works. And so next year, we're going to be requesting, or we've already requested $800,000 in subsidy funds for the cross-channel, so that's how we're able to increase that per-ticket subsidy.
So is this going to be just the month of July or is it going to be all year?
It's not going to be a one-time. It's the new standard subsidy.
Oh, yeah.
It's a bit of a guesswork when we're coming up with, you know, how much we can subsidize without, you know, going too far over that pooled funding. So this is a number we feel pretty confident that we can maintain through the year. It's outlined in the staff report, but we have seen a considerable decrease in the average number of books subsidized in a month, if you kind of divide pre and post COVID. And so that also kind of helps us to be able to make this increase.
That's wonderful.
And the important thing is we never want to leave money on the table with the county, so we want to use it.
A little group of UCF.
Yes.
Okay, that's.
Sounds exciting.
Then I would make a motion to approve a $20 increase to commuter book subsidy for a total subsidy of $105 per book effective beginning July 1st, 2024.
I'll second. That was a tie. Okay, she says Mary wins. Okay. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Shiglin?
Resounding yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Lavel?
Also, yes.
Mayor Marshall?
Yes.
Four ayes, one absent. Councilmember De La Rosa.
I'm not going to jinx anything, but I have to make a comment. There was a, did I just jinx it by even saying that?
Just in case.
There was a bit going on in one of the offices about what time this meeting was going to be over and.
We're over the hump.
We're not done yet.
No, we're great. Okay.
Item number nine, more good news, Jocelyn walks up, just want to thank Jocelyn Francis, Julie Beretta, and CRNR for the ability to bring this to you. It's voluntary summer Saturday residential trash service pilot program. Jocelyn?
Yeah, so after meeting with Julie, we came up with this pilot program for summer 2024. It would go into effect the Saturday before 4th of July, which would be June 29th, and go through Labor Day weekend. So that'd be an extra 10 trash pickups for residential customers only with cart service. To enroll in the voluntary program, CRNR is creating a form and a mechanism for folks to go online and submit their information to enroll in the one-time pilot program. It's only $27 for the 10 extra pickups. Right now, it's the cart service, like I mentioned, trash. The way it would work operationally, CRNR would place like a temporary curb marking to show which residents have enrolled in the program and paid for it through CRNR. And, I mean, that's really it. It's pretty, pretty simple. And then, once we get through the summer season, hopefully it'll address some of those residents that either have got a lot of out-of-town visitors for the summer, or some of those vacation rentals that might not have space for an added cart service. We can take advantage of the Saturday service instead, so.
I'm wondering about the, getting the word out to all of the transit rental license people, because if I own my home over town and somebody's renting it out, am I going to care about the trash and run for another 27 bucks? You know, so I don't know how we can, what we can do, and maybe that's also a lot of communication with, like, CIVR and Hamilton Cove.
Yeah.
As I'm a little concerned about, and then, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I do have a letter, depending on what you guys decide tonight, prepped and ready to go, to talk about waste diversion efforts in general for our vacation rental owners. So encouraging recycling, letting them know that we've got nearly three years left on the life of the landfill, in addition to this summer program, so, yeah.
And then this really doesn't have any impact on the big dumpsters that are like at Soul Vista or Bahia Vista or?
Correct, yeah, those are a different collection schedule that I'm sure Julie could talk about if he had more questions.
And she's, yeah, because we're hearing that already. Remember I mentioned to you the other day about they pick up five and they leave four, but then, but the other ones are, it's still kind of, I don't know. I understand that, why they don't pick them all up, but they all seem to be full and just dumping half of them is a problem because they fill up so quickly, but. Julie's on here somewhere? She's on mute.
Good evening, can you hear me? Yes. Good. If Jocelyn will send me the information, Mayor, we can address those. Commercial's a little bit easier, and that is something we've kind of talked about, how to properly bill customers that maybe need more service as well. But I know in the prior meetings from the residential side, I know that's something that was addressed since we changed to the source separation system, that we were still seeing a lot of the trash containers overflowing. But we can definitely address that, and commercial's a little bit easier to manage that because we have a lot of the contact information. For the most part, obviously, they're a property that's run by a specific person that we could work with, whereas we have the challenge, as you mentioned, with some of these rental properties, but we will definitely look into those. The one thing I just wanted to add is, as Jocelyn mentioned, it's a volunteer program for residential, but I'll share with you that we've been doing this in Newport on the Balboa Peninsula for the last 15 years, and it's worked very well. We have, just on the peninsula alone, over 400 customers that are subscribing to that Saturday service with the same schedule, the Saturday before 4th of July through Saturday of Labor Day.
How well are we doing as a town in the off-season on the separation of stuff? The organics, the recycling, and the trash?
The town is doing much better. I know that Councilmember Lavel and Jocelyn came out and visited with us. We still have a lot of material that's ending up into the landfill carts, the black containers. We also see some wish cycling, for better words, but I think we can overcome that with the additional postcards, similar that we did earlier, a couple months ago. And our plan is to do that every quarter, to do a reminder to everyone with the what goes where. Those postcards that we had go into every single mailbox. It's just constant communication, but I will share, even though we've had all of our cities on the mainland doing a three-cart system for probably the last 15 years, we still have contamination levels, that we would call it the things of the wrong container. still have contamination levels, that we would call it the things of the wrong containers, at about 25%. So it is a ongoing process, no matter what city you're in, what hauler you're in. It's just a constant education. So Avalon is not alone, but I will say, doing much better than, than probably six months ago, I would say.
So what about businesses that still don't seem to have the two or three cans out for the recycling? They're just putting them in the old bins that they've had. Are your guys able to, do you write them a letter? Do you do something? I think there's a couple we can point out not on the air, but, but just don't, haven't done anything. It's business as usual.
Yes, Mayor. If you can send those to Jocelyn, she'll send them to me. So we continue to add programs on a regular basis. So if I'm not out there, we have Ken Robbins, who's been great, and he's doing the site surveys and visiting. He's the one that's also doing the required SB 1383 contamination monitoring, where he's doing the lid flips and checking the residential containers and the business containers to see who's sorting properly. But if you could just send those away, as you mentioned, off the air, we'll definitely follow up on those. But we are adding programs on a regular basis.
Thank you.
I think this is a great program in terms of asking for additional service, like we have been, and being able to have it during the busiest time. I suspect there might even be people that would potentially be interested in having it be a regular Saturday service year-round, not just during the summertime. So I'm curious to see after, hopefully if we prove this after the test phase, what would happen. There were some questions, and I think part of it goes back to code about people who live on the flats especially. Most of them live in homes that don't have trash that is covered and/or locked. And so people dump trash into those cans all the time when they're walking up and down the alleys or on trash day. And so the hard part is that, of course, it's not necessarily the homeowner or the renter or the vacation rental person who's doing the dumping in the wrong can.
Yeah, because I have, I have that happen all the time with our vacation rental next door. We pull the bin out, and I'll walk by it like 20 minutes later, and somebody else's trash is in it. So, yeah.
And so trying to figure out a way to ensure that that doesn't happen, I think by changing code to require covered and locked trash bins when they're not out for service, and then just unlocking them while they're in service is one way to look at that. It's a requirement in most other cities that they have a covered and closed-off trash space for that. I know it's harder to pull space from places, especially on the flats, but something we need to look at. But I don't know if we can manage that through having additional, I don't even know how you would manage that otherwise, because it's just open public space, basically. So, anyway, I would be in favor of this. I think it's something that people have been asking for. I'm curious to know, though, if it's possible to reach out to renters as well as owners, where owners may not necessarily choose to want to do this, but renters might want to pay for it. I'm thinking specifically of our family. We would pay for this for the summer because we have guests coming to stay with us.
And it's only $27?
Right, for 10, yeah.
That's crazy.
It's $270 a Saturday. It's easy.
Wonderful.
So...
We'll publish it for sure, you know, Facebook, online, and other outlets. But I did specifically want to reach out to those short-term vacation rental owners, just because we want, got to recycle, got to make sure that we're getting recycling off-island, and they know about this program and the kitchen waste, green waste program. So, yeah.
And I don't know if it is possible to have this be a direct payment as opposed to a tax role requirement. Is that something we can do?
Yeah, it's completely voluntary.
It is, okay. Perfect.
So you pay the $27 to CRNR. They'll start the Saturday service. Yeah, it's a one-time payment, one-time fee. Yeah, it's not associated with the property taxes.
Great.
So like in a multi-unit building like mine?
You could pay for it for yourself, yeah.
If I wanted to do that, I could just pay CRNR the $27 and they would do it for my trash area?
If it's cart service, if it's a dumpster?
Cart services, the big rolling bins?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, it's only, only cart service right now. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was also curious about, oh, sorry, did you have more?
No.
Okay. I was also curious about the service will not include green waste or recycling at this time. So what happens when you just have one cart, people pay $27 for the one cart, and then it's all mixed? There's food, there's, there's recycling, there's everything in there. Will they leave it alone? Will they pick it up? What?
I mean, I'd have to defer to Julie on that. They won't pick out, like, right, currently, right? They're not going to take a recycling bin on a Saturday, right? They're not going to take a kitchen waste bin on a Saturday. They're only going to take that landfill bin. But to your point...
I'm saying, I'm saying if it's all mixed up, you know, so I think Julie, maybe a good idea would be to say, okay, you enrolled in this service, you know, but have like a little sticker that you can put. Because remember when she said she would do the lift-the-lid thing and leave notes? So maybe she could, they, they could leave a note saying, sorry, this is all mixed up and it has to be trash only, or so that they would know going forward?
Yeah, I have, yeah, they have these like blue, Julie can talk about this too, but they've got these like blue cards that they put on the outside of the carts. If it's, you know, they're putting out the wrong materials on a certain day, or it's completely cross-contaminated, they'll not pick up. And they'll just leave it there, or issue a warning or whatnot. So...
Okay, I think we need to do that.
Sorry?
I'm sorry, Jocelyn. I was just going to say, I think we probably need to do that. So I get where, where you're, where you're thinking and where you're going. As we pick up these trash containers, because that's what the program is for, just the excess trash, but I will have the drivers lift the lids, and if they can physically see that there's a lot of recyclables in there, and they still see some food waste, that they still leave that blue tag, we'll dump it because they paid for it, but we'll leave the blue tag, which on the, on the front side kind of reminds them of what their service day is, and on the backside, it says what goes where. So I think we probably leave that on every cart, just to make sure that they're automatically, just constant reminder, as Jocelyn said, try to divert at least the recyclables, which is the majority of what we see from the trash containers.
Okay, thanks, Julie.
And Julie, if this program is successful, is there a possibility of adding in green waste and recyclables to the program as well?
Yeah, it's definitely, we can look at that. The only thing is, as you realize, we would have to run three different trucks or the one truck and keep the materials separate if we do it for all of them. So there would be some extra costs because we'd have to put some extra vehicles on the road on a Saturday, which we normally don't run.
Right.
So let me ask you another question. So people like Bahia Vista and Soul Vista that have those big giant, well, Soul Vista I know, I don't know, have those big giant rolling things. Is there a way that they could pay extra to get more of those if they had a location for them?
Yes. Or we could increase frequency. We can dump them more often. But that's something we could reach out and talk with them, even like you said, maybe for the summer months, that if they need to increase service more from, who knows, you know, May through September, and then they can decrease the service pickups for the, for the off-season. That's something we can do on a regular basis. They can go up and down.
That would be awesome. Yeah, that would be great. Okay. Other questions or comments?
And then kind of coincide with this, you guys approved a reverse vending machine in this year's budget, right? So hopefully soon we'll be able to get that reverse vending machine where folks can get redemption value for their recyclables. So...
That'd be a glorious day.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
It's going to be good.
Well, thank you, Julie. And Jocelyn?
I'll authorize the city manager, make the motion to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the contract agreement with CRNR, Inc., to add a voluntary residential Saturday trash service from the Saturday preceding the 4th of July holiday through Labor Day weekend for 2024.
Second. Call for the vote?
Councilmember Ponse?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lavell?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, Councilmember De La Rosa.
Finally, item number 10, we have planning commission appointments.
Oh, the good news, the very good news, is that we have, we have 12 applicants for the planning commission, four vacancies plus an alternate. So that was very good. But of course, then that brings on additional challenges because now you have to make a selection from these people. You can only pick six out of the 12. And I was, usually I did this by myself, but I, I called on the Mayor Protem to help me with this because it was much bigger than just taking whoever we got and saying, yeah, thank you for applying, and here you are. So this is, this has taken a lot of deliberation, a lot more than I would have thought. It was, it was pretty painstaking. But I think we've come up with a slate that we agree on. And, and Lisa's going to want to talk too, but in looking ahead, being that we had so many people that were interested, it seems like it's time to maybe give other people an opportunity to participate, to learn and to grow with our city. So some of the, so some of the existing members will not be recommended to be put back on the commission, and then there will be some new people that we've come up with as a slate. But would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, I, first off, I just wanted to thank each of the 12 people for applying and for going through the interview process with us and with Kelly from Sage Press. I think that the challenging part was, it's not as if any member on the planning commission previously was doing a poor job. But we felt like there was a need to bring in additional people who haven't done this role before, both to learn from their experience and then also to have a little bit of different experience in their backgrounds and try to diversify the planning commission where we could. So I encourage that there were a fewer, a few people that were not homeowners, that were not business owners that applied, that were, did or did not have vacation rentals, did or did not have real estate experience. It was, it was a broad group of people that I was kind of encouraged to see. So yes, a lot of deliberation, I think, more than either one of us expected, which is a good thing. It meant that everyone did a wonderful job in applying and providing information. And so if you want to announce who we kind of are recommending, and then we can go from there on what we do.
So if you want to, I should have probably typed something up, but we just resolved this today. So, so we were, we were wanting to put back on Eric Uart, Yoli Say, and Yoli Say. And the new members would be Brenda Carroll, who you might know as Brenda Jordal, and Jesse McDonald, the female Jesse McDonald. And the alternate would be Sean Sterling.
Very interesting. I know, I talked to Sean before, when he told me that he applied for this. And I've, I've had several conversations with him in the past, when he was helping me with a friend that her husband was in hospice and stuff. And so he, just out of that situation, he verbal vomit a bunch of stuff, you know, and it was just like, wow, Sean, that's pretty insightful. So he's, he's very passionate. I think that would be good. Jesse has been in this town forever. She worked at Edison, and she worked for the city in the fire department. And she's, but, you know, not connected to real estate or anything like that. Passionate about this town and has been here for a long time. Same with Brenda, you know. And of course, Yoli and Eric, you know, they've, they've been there before. We've seen their work, you know, so I think that's a, I think that's a good mix of, of blood and past experience. I'm guessing it was really difficult.
Really seriously challenging, because you don't want to, like, I wish we could create another commission for all the other people that applied to be on, because they want to get involved and be helpful, and that's a good thing.
Right.
But I don't know what we would, what we would create to do that, so.
And in another two years, right, we'll be doing this again?
Correct.
For three positions.
Correct.
And so those people that have already applied, of course, if you would want to do it again, you'd have to reapply, but you would have another opportunity in two years. And I would hope that people that are interested in actually attend the planning commission meetings, or express that they have watched a lot of the meetings and that kind of thing. Because I didn't get a big feeling of that from anybody, for that matter. So, so we'll just, this is, this is a good step. You know, some people have been on the planning commission and then run for city council. So for some, that's a stepping stone as well. So, again, for those who, who we've removed, we want to thank you for, both of those folks had eight years of service on the planning commission already. You are, you're fantastic. It's just, we just...
I do want to say, though, that I do have a hard time with, since the conflict of interest thing came up and stuff too, though, in my head, I have a hard time with people that work for vacation rental companies or are real estate agents. And I know it's not true in every other city on the planet. There's, there's a lot of cities that do have real estate agents and vacation rental people on, on their planning commission. And so I understand that's a recognized practice, but I just, I think this town has so many variables, you know, in a small town, especially concerning that area. So I have a hard time with that. But I, I don't want to put anything in an ordinance saying that they're not allowed or anything like that. But I just wanted to kind of put that on record, that I do have a hard time with that part. But so it's, that's why it's comforting for me to see that there's two people in the alternate that we're putting on don't have those ties. And I'm, I'm really encouraged to, and interested to see how this commission interacts going forward. I, I feel that they'll do a good job. And again, everybody, thank you for your service and your time in the past. I completely echo that.
And Kelly, I know, and there's going to be developed, developing some training for everyone, because there's a lot of complicated things, that setbacks and variances, like Dave Maestro said, you know, it's not just CUP coming forward or whatever. There's a lot of, go ahead.
Yeah, so as you all well know, the planning commission kind of serves a number of roles for the community. One of them is to review development applications as they come in to city, to the city for review. And here in Avalon, the vast majority of development applications that come in do require discretionary review with planning commission. So that is a really big role. And the other one, of course, is as an advisory board to city council. So they're the first ones who will get a look at updates to the municipal code. As I mentioned earlier, they're going to be seeing something probably in the next couple of months. So those are two really big roles that they serve for the community. And, you know, after council makes their decision regarding the makeup of the planning commission for appointments, we do plan to schedule a training with them to kind of, again, we'll have, you know, reminder for the folks who have served for some years and kind of an introduction to the folks who might be new regarding kind of the role of planning commission, sort of the legal obligations that we have in terms of fair and open government, to make sure that everyone's kind of up to speed moving forward, since, you know, the community does potentially have a lot of really significant projects coming forward in the next few years. And we want everyone to feel comfortable with what their role is and what staff can do to help support them and being able to fulfill their obligations.
Awesome.
I would, I would like to make a motion to approve Brenda Carroll, Eric Uart, Jesse McDonald, Yolanda Say to the four, four-year term, and Sean Sterling as the alternate.
There's a second?
I'll second.
Moving in second, call for the vote?
Councilmember Ponse?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lavell?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, Councilmember De La Rosa.
Good job.
And, okay, who won the bet? Meeting is adjourned. Who won the bet? I was here in 8:30, somebody was saying.
Well, yeah.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
I didn't mean anything by it, no. But I was expect, I was expecting to get out here late.
Did they? It got better, it really did get better.
Yeah, there was a little rain right at the end there, but it's so weird that it echoes, like, it feels like everything's pointed in that way and not this way.
Are we turned off?
I don't know if we are, but... Yeah, possibly, but maybe I don't know about echo, if they'll pick it up or not.
Are we turned off? Are we off the air?
Jamie.
Jamie.
Jamie, are we off the air?
Are we off the air? Are we off there?
Hey, Jamie.
Okay, so, okay, so.